We can start now. Today is about classes. Everybody please rise. Now for the lights, please, with invitation, I'll leave a place.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you again tonight for the opportunity to discuss the business of the city. God, I pray that you would guide us in grace as we seek to serve you and our citizens to the best of our ability. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. Thank you so much everybody for being here and welcome to the people on screen with us. Thank y'all for being too. It'll be a real nice session this time, I'm afraid. All is good, I guess. Public comments, we have no list of public comments, nobody has asked to get on there. And just remind everybody, you have to contact ahead of time to get, contact the city clerk. Get on the agenda because we can't talk about a subject unless it's on the agenda. Okay. Old business, there is none. And new business. Item one is discussion, OPEB trust study, Councilman Evans and City Account Harrison.
So I had been talking to city accountants about this. This is something that we started quite a while ago. We had, I think we've gotten to the point where we've gotten the documents together and gotten them back. So at this time, I think we want some more discussion. This is something the OPEB trust deals with post-retirement benefits for employees. And this is something that I think we talked about as a tool to maintain or retain long-term employees. Which requires, you know, to be a certain age and be served a certain number of years before you will be eligible. And, you know, tonight, as the mayor mentioned, discussion. We've got some information in our packages that we've been able to read over. And City Account Harrison is going to be able to give us some of the numbers and figures.
Thank you, Councilman Evans. As Councilman Evans said, we have been kind of talking about this for a few years. Staff has been asked to move forward with the OPEB study. In December, I believe, we had the council meeting where the mayor council approved for us to move forward with the study with the parameters of providing to the retirees the health insurance prescription and then $10,000 in liability insurance. Rule of eighty was to be met. And at that point, the study was 100% of the benefit would be taken care of. So with that information, we contacted Segal and they provided us a preliminary summary back in May, but provided us a final summary July the 29th. And that's kind of what you've got. It's just a one-page summary of liability to OPEB implementation. It's just a one-pager right there. So I'm going to go ahead. I'm not an actuary, but I'm going to go ahead and kind of proceed to explain what this numbers, what these numbers mean and how it would affect the city. First, there is the, it's the unfunded actuary accrued liability. It's, you'll see it under the baseline, it's a million three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That pretty much represents the present value of claims already earned by our active employees. Now, we have two columns, the baseline and the alternative. The baseline uses the 3.5% discount for the municipal bond rating. The alternative funding result, which as you can see, the unfunded liability there is 976,163 and that uses a discount rate of six and a half percent. So the higher the discount rate, the lower the liability. Of course, that discount rate can fluctuate depending on the market, just to say that, just to let y'all know that. The difference really between the baseline and the alternative, and if you notice in the second set of numbers, the projected actuarially determined contribution for the baseline is 148,000 annually. But for the alternative, it's 104,000 annually. The difference there, under the alternative method, it is assuming that, one, we would establish a trust. Two, we would implement a funding policy. And then, three, that we would make the required annual payments into the trust annually. One thing I do want to point out with the trust, and I'm also going to talk about a little bit the option of pay as you go versus funding the trust and maybe what the pros and cons are. But one thing about the trust is as we fund it with the 104,000 annually, that is, remember, that's for the present value of the claims for the active employees earned as of when the trust starts. If we have any retirees, that, that cost of that benefit is going to be on top of that 104,000 dollars. And then, we would have an actuary study annually, which could be about 15,000. And then we would have administrative fees. So just to kind of give you an idea, it wouldn't just be the 104,000 dollars. Let's see, there was some other things that I looked at. I pulled a document that Segal sent us about the funding. Let's see, did I do that right? Okay, yeah, he does talk about funding considerations. Okay, and this we got after we had our like, our initial conference call. He says, as noted on the initial conference call, the city has the option of pre-funding the plan either at the same time the plan is created, which in my mind says, we're going to put the whole 976,000 dollars into the plan. Or at some later date, that pre-funding becomes possible. He said, when discussing this option, it may be helpful to keep the following considerations in mind. Contributions to the trust would be in addition to the benefit payments for retirees, at least initially, I just said that. Over time, it could be expected that the trust would be sufficient to pay benefit payments directly, thus relieving the city from these payments. How long this would take would depend on a variety of factors, including the funding policy adopted, the actual contributions made and asset return and return on the asset and investment on the assets. Let's see here. Pre-funding promotes intergenerational equity, often looked upon favorably by rating agencies. For example, if we were doing a bond issue or borrowing some money, it would help our credit rating maybe a little bit. So that's, that's kind of the pre-funding, that's setting up the trust. I have kind of looked at a couple of other municipalities we discussed in department head meeting this morning that, and keep in mind, the trust is going to be an irrevocable trust and the funds would be restricted. So what money goes in there has got to be used for OPEB benefits. So at any point in time, the city said, we might not want to continue to fund this. We could not take that out and use it for city business. It would have to be exhausted for OPEB benefits. So, but back to, like I said, I've looked at a couple of other municipalities. We kind of talked in the department head meeting this morning. There is an option to do a pay as you go. And as I've kind of looked at it more and more and researched a little bit more and crunched the numbers, it would be a little bit, it would be less expensive to us on an annual basis. And as we, if we were doing a pay as we go, the city would just budget. We would, we would estimate the number of retirees each year as we did our budget. And our costs would be the premiums for those retirees. And then we would have an annual actuary study that we would have to pay for as well. That's just, that's just something we have to do all the time. So just a kind of a quick comparison based on this schedule, let's just say we had four retirees. If we did pay as you go, right now, at 100%, our premiums are about 7,600 dollars a year for an employee only. I would, I would assume it would be pretty close for retirees. So that would be 30,800. I estimated an actuary study of about 15,000. So under pay as you go for four retirees, it would be 45,800. If the city, the mayor councils chose to fund the trust, we would have to fund the 104,445 dollars annually. Then we'd have the additional cost of the insurance for their retirees until the trust was able to take that over. And then we'd have the cost of the actuary study and administrative fee. So that would be more close to 150,000 dollars to fund the trust. Pros and cons with the trust, and the best way I can compare it to is, you know, we do have the retirement for the employees. We do have a trust for that. That is something that when an employee retires, it's paid in perpetuity until really dead. The, the OPEB would not be paid for the retirees rest of their life. It would be cut off at 65. So I would feel more comfortable, I would feel comfortable with not doing a trust for OPEB versus pension, I would not feel comfortable with doing that. But that's, you know, just, like I said, that's a way to reduce some of our costs.
Yeah, so just the money in order a little bit.
Okay.
So you're talking about funding the trust or providing the benefit? You mentioned that for four employees, it would be approximately 45,000 dollars?
Correct, and that would consist of about 31,000 for the actual premiums. And then, I just estimated 15,000 for that actuary.
But that's only if they retire.
If during that window.
Yeah, it's only if, you're right.
If they meet the rule of eighty. And they, they also have to start taking their pension.
There's not, there's not an age requirement.
There's not a minimum age requirement.
The rule of eighty is the only requirement.
Right.
At this point.
But it lasts till they're sixty-five.
Yeah.
And so, so.
Start when they actually retire.
Right, until they're sixty-five. So if somebody retired at sixty-five, they will be on the plan for ten years.
That's correct.
Yeah, someone retired at sixty, of course, five years. So, and to mention, you know, a health insurance benefit is great benefit. It is. And, and there's even the option of asking that employee to fund some of that. The city provides 75% and they provide 25% of something to that. Still a great benefit.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I'm just saying that, so those are considerations. I mean, we're not locked into one thing.
Well, and the goal is to get it to where you've built up your portion of the trust enough to where it becomes self-sustaining and you're not having to continue to make those contributions to it. But I do think that.
That's correct.
One thing we discussed in the department meeting this morning is with that, there's almost sort of a hybrid version of this with the pay as you go component of it, is if you can pay into the trust at any time, whatever amount that you want. So as you go year to year and you're covering the employees that are retiring, you're addressing that on a case-by-case basis as it comes, you can either have a line item in the budget or as funds become available, you can visit those funds and put it into that trust at any amount that you want. And so, as you, as funds become available, you can, you can build that trust up until you get to that form where it is self-sustaining.
Well, it's fully funded.
You can sort of, you can do both of those things at the same time. It's not, the choices are not, either we do pay as you go and you pay for it piece by piece until it reaches fully funded, or you write one big check. There is, there is, I do think there's a way you can split the difference here. You can pay as you go for the employees that will be eligible for it soon. And then, to just keep that as a budget priority until this, I think you can do both of those things at the same time.
And then, again, according to your numbers here, and this 1.371 million was based on what again?
That was based on the city providing the health insurance prescription and 10,000 dollars of life. And the retiree meets the rule of eighty and the city pays 100% of the benefit. And then the retiree also would have to start, would have to be collecting their pension to be eligible as well.
So it comes from the actuary then studies data that the city provides about mayor employees, ages and retirement eligibility. And they have some of that because we're in their retirement program. And then Christopher buys additional information about employees, those items. Then they look at that and do a what-if scenario based on these numbers. And that's how they come up with the liability over.
You mentioned earlier, Councilman Evans, that this is a, this is intended to be a retention tool. That this would apply to honestly, a pretty small percentage of employees would be able to qualify for this. But typically, those are the employees that have been with you for all this, have the most institutional knowledge. One of the things we discussed in the meeting this morning is that one of the, one of the limitations when you're talking about succession planning and advancement in a small city, is that for somebody who is, who starts with you young, they work with you for a long time. When you have a situation like ours where people like working here, thank goodness, we have a lot of department heads who have been here, that have been at the top of their department for a long time. And you get to a point where in your career, you could say, well, maybe I need to move on somewhere else where there are opportunities for advancement. I know that's happened in the fire department before where guys have just said, Chief Jones is such a young, spry, attractive man. He's been here for such a long time that maybe I, maybe I should look for a place where the opportunities would be to move up. This is an incentive for them to say, well, maybe I'm not going to get to move up as soon as I would like to. But there's a real financial benefit to be staying here and being cared for. And even having the option to retire a little bit earlier and being able to, you know, not be, and have health insurance, be able to work. And to be able to retire and many times have a second career, you know, even earlier. So I do think it's a good option. And it sounds with the, with the relative or recent discovery that we can do this pay-as-you-go option, not just for the initial year, but we can do it as long as we so choose to do it this way. I think it makes it a very financially viable option for the city. It's something to consider, a way to keep folks around because there's a, there's not a large supply of some of these positions of people who've been trained up and sent to class and got certified. So anything you can do to keep them here, I think is certainly in our best interest.
Anybody else have any questions? Did you have anything?
Yes, I just had a question. I'm just curious as to when, how long ago did we have this information?
The final results of the study, the full report, we got about three weeks ahead.
He sent me the most recent July the 29th.
Right. So it has been, it's been a process and we requested the study. It took a while to get it.
We did. We requested, well, you know, I think we gave him the parameter information at the beginning of January. He gave us like a preliminary in May, but he didn't have the final discount rates until June. And actually, this schedule is a redo of one of the prior schedules he had sent. Because if you recall, one of the prior schedules for the 30-year had the, the funding of like 80,000. And I asked him, why is that so much, you know, different? And so he had to redo a schedule. This one, I got July the 29th.
So somebody asked him to do that in January, he asked you to do.
That's what.
I know, I'm just curious, I don't want to get information.
We got the final numbers. See, we have preliminary numbers and Carol and I talked about it. And the firm number for us needed to be based on the June 30th returns.
Right.
And so we, we thought, if we want to give you firm numbers, he needs to wait on June 30th. And that's the result of getting it on July 29th.
Correct, correct. And pretty, and probably this hasn't changed drastically since May. But it is good to have the exact numbers versus something close, you know.
We didn't get a clarification on the pay-as-you-go part of the plan until this week. Late breaking, yeah, it's an ongoing process.
It's ongoing process.
Has this ever been discussed in a budget committee as far as the potential cost associated with it?
It was not.
We didn't discuss initially.
It's not discussed this year, but there's no requirement on it this year.
You can adopt it now and then you would have to, you would have to put it in next year's budget.
Yes, I'm just, I'm just curious if there was a topic that may be, not to be funded, but just to have the.
We discussed the increase in the retirement benefit. We did not discuss the dis.
Well, and we didn't get even preliminary numbers until May, you know, budget meetings in April. But they were, we didn't have the data until after the budget meeting.
Well, when Carol and I really talked about, we need the firm June 30th numbers. That's what I asked the question about, if the city decided to implement this year, could we pay as we go and then begin funding when we can build it into a budget? And that's how that question came about.
Learn all the other, other information about those.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We're going to start asking questions and you'll do stuff that you never expected.
Correct. And we, if we do the pay as you go, we would still have to put the OPEB liability on our financial statements. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we would move towards funding that amount. For example, one of the entities I looked at, and that's much larger, but their OPEB liability is probably about 40 million dollars. Well, they, they choose not to fund it. They just do pay as you go. And so they just pay their portion of the premiums or their portion of the claims if they were self-funded versus moving, versus funding that dollar amount. But we would just have to put that on our financial statements.
On a financial statement, that liability remain, remain the same or could it change?
Oh, it would, it would change.
Just on the number of employees.
Right, as the number of employees are hired or rolled off or retirees or move into retirement or roll off. That, that's a moving number. And that's where the actuary study would come in. Every year, we'd get that actuary study, just like the pension. We get an actuary study every year. So for the financial statements, I have to match the pension liability or in our case, right now, it's pension asset, all the financials to agree with that actuary before.
So Carol, I thought, I heard you say that there were some other municipalities using this as well.
Um, I know Warner Robbins and Houston County, they both, both have OPEB. I don't know that they're through the GMEs, but they have other post-employment benefits that they do provide. And currently, they're doing pay as you go.
Councilwoman Armin, how I can address that? I'm currently the chair of the board of trustees. There are 23 OPEB programs that GMA administers. There are, like Carol said, Warner Robbins is not one of those that are self-funded. Houston County is through ACCG or self-funded, I'm not sure. Of those 23 that are administered through GMA, seven are identical or nearly identical to what you all are proposing with employee-only health and prescription and 10,000 dollar life insurance benefit. Of those seven, five pay 100% of the employee cost. One does a 50/50 split and one has the employees pay some flat number, say 100 or 200 dollars and they pay the difference. And those are the actual numbers about the things that compare identically to what we're considering.
And I think, I think as we draw up the plan, if mayor council want to leave it open-ended as far as, well, we start with 100%, but if we want to leave it open-ended, that maybe in the future, we want to go 75, 25 or something like that. I think you could stipulate that in the plan.
Would you have to stipulate it? No, we can change it.
Right, I think you start out and say, these are the parameters. And it's like the retirement or anything else, you could amend your plan.
You can change it every once or you don't, there's no reason.
Right.
Well, that would, that would make it having to do an amendment, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not sure they would draft plan documents that said for now this. They would say, these are the terms of the plan and parameters. And then if you come back and look at it, you know, I, we do see on the board, we do see plan amendments and those get brought forward. Nobody so much city can do.
No, I can, I can, I can see with a plan like this, that there'd be a number of years where there's nobody on the plan. But then, you know, because of the age gap and because of people coming and going, as you were saying. So if you want a pay-as-you-go plan, those years, you would pay.
Just have the study.
Just have it.
I mean, I would think the earliest, if you got a new employee coming on board, they're, they're, they have to be, they have to start working, you know, in their early twenties to learn to qualify for this program. So it is a small percentage of employees that do qualify for it, but it's ones that have a long history with us already. Have a lot of, you know, a lot of knowledge of basically what to do. So this is a, this is a tool to try to keep them around. You know, it's a challenge for all city officials. This is a little bit similar to what the city of Fitzgerald did. So what they did is that they just offered an early retirement option. They allowed you to do a retirement at different levels of your pay at, I think it's like as early as five years. So they asked folks that would retire from one, from one city and work with them for five years. They don't get very, they don't get very much, but it's a supplemental with the early retirement income is. And their attitude towards it was, we got five years worth of somebody who's got four years of experience. We got to pay their retirement a little while. They were in a situation where they had like no employees. They were contracting out outside of people because they couldn't get help. So this, I think, is a little, this is a process that you could do to try to get ahead of something like that rather than, they were sort of responding to an emergency situation. They came and presented that at GMA council this year. And it's a, it's a cool option, but I think that for us, I think we're not quite to that title as far as just, you just share it.
Well, I mean, a practical example, a 40-year-old new hire can have to work 20 years. They'd be comfortable for this. They'd be 60 at that point, if they decided to retire then. So, you know, again, the rule of eighty provides you some protection from people being on there for 20, 30 years. Just not to have that.
I think maybe some of them, probably one of the.
Probably. They need 40 years.
Oh, I got you. Okay, so, well, and that's, I mean, that's the same kind of thing we're talking about with, you can make, if you adopt a program like this, you may find people say, hey, I can go at 40, go and work here. I can retire five years early. So the cost for us is the extra cost of this program, but what you get is 20 years of the, what, what most business executives would tell you is the best years of somebody's work life. And that, that for, when they know what they're doing, their life is a little more stable and they have some training experience. So statistics show the lives are more stable. I can't speak very much, but statistics show that it's a little more stable. So I think that's a, I think that's a good benefit for sure.
So I know, I know, I know we're here for discussion tonight, but I can tell you, I, I'm liking what I'm seeing as a benefit for employees to retain and to hire folks that would stay here for a while. And looking forward to more discussion and us making a decision on what we're planning on doing in the near future. So again, no budget for anything this year, but you know, we have that coming up again soon. And we can discuss it some more once we've made a decision on whether we're going to move forward. to move forward, and then once we decide, yes, we're going to do this, then we'll have to set up the terms.
Either way, I don't think we have any papers due during this fiscal year.
Or probably not next fiscal year, or maybe next.
So, next year, you never know, but this one.
Not this year, though.
Okay, anybody else have anything? All right, this group will do the next item on the agenda, and that's the Councilman Council. I know I'm going to disappoint you. I'm going to pose one first. Well, please.
I don't think I have any, any comments. I've had some questions on this, but I have some, like, the explanation of the hybrid, I think we did clear that up, and so I don't have any other topics. I encourage everyone to come out to the September sixth, the, where we'll have a public hearing on property taxes.
Both, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I had a chance to go and talk with the Centerville Rotary Club this morning. They asked me to come in and, and answer a few questions about the, the new apartment complex that is being built behind the Gallery Mall, and since our friends from the Houston Home Journal are here tonight, I thought I would just say this, and maybe we could clear up one, I think, important fact about those. All of those units in those apartments that are being built are what are classified as affordable housing units, uh, which means a couple of things. Uh, the big confusion, the question that I get asked over and over again is, are these Section Eight housing homes? And the answer is no, they are not. Uh, it is a different code section. And the biggest difference is this, with Section Eight homes, the tenant never touches any of the money. The government pays the landlord directly, and the tenant just lives there. Uh, with these homes, in order to qualify, you have to go through an income verification process where you have to submit some documents. I'm, I'm sure there will be some contact with the employer to verify your employment, to verify your salary, once you get paid, to verify your income, and then based on that information, they set what your rent rate is for the year with the goal of, if you make a, a qualifying income amount, there's a, a basement and a ceiling, so to speak. There's a minimum amount you have to make, and there's a amount where you cap out and make two and twenty to qualify. Those numbers aren't hard and fast because they go up and down depending on the size of your household. A single person, that range is here. Family of four, that range is a little, is a little different. But every year, you have to go through this income verification process with the goal being to make your rent approximately thirty percent of your income. And right now, that's just a, a hard thing for some folks to, to be able to make. I use the example of a young lady that attends my church. Uh, she graduated high school two years ago, she's working full-time, uh, she's working, actually working a second part-time job, and with, with only a high school education, she works at a dentist's office, she's not working, you know, at a very, she's not working a minimum wage job. Her monthly take-home pay is about seventeen hundred bucks, which thirty percent of that for your income would not put you close to half of what the average apartment is in Warner Robins or in Centerville. So, this is, I think, a chance for some folks who are starting out, some folks who are at a transitional phase in their lives. I think the goal is for these homes to be transitional for people. It's a place for you to live while you build your income up, while you grow a little bit, while you're not exhausting all of your resources on housing, and then to be able to, um, as I asked a question of one of the developers, what happens when somebody goes, "Wait, if I'm making all this money now, why am I going to keep?" Because as your, as your income goes up, your rent goes up. So, what's going to happen when somebody says, "And why am I paying all this money to live in this house?" The, the, the mix of them would go, "Wait a minute, I have all this money. I could go, I'm, I'm making more money now, I can go, I can go live somewhere else, I can afford something different." So, um, and then I've had this conversation at meetings, on the street, and I'll have that whole conversation, and then the person will go, "So, you're saying they're Section Eight?" No, no, they're not. It is an entirely different program. I, I think it is a, a, a much more well-rounded program for folks. Um, they are taking applications now, from what I understand. Uh, they have, uh, is that correct, they have a kiosk at the mall? Are they there every day now?
I don't know about a mall presence, other than the signs that they have put up around the corner of.
I just saw a post on the mall Facebook page where they had some, they had a table, so I don't know how often they're there.
Yeah, they are, they've just.
Oh, really? Okay, well, that's good. So, they're taking applications every morning, starting at nine AM, and, uh.
They, they plan to pre-lease through local completion and they're going to work.
Yeah, the, the big barrier to their completion right now is, is some big electrical component that they ordered like in January, they still, it's backordered, they still haven't received, so they can't complete their project until they get their hands on that piece of equipment. But, um, again, this is not a city project, we have no, you know.
City park office gets that question all the time.
Absolutely.
They get called every day, "How much of those, how can I apply for?" The city has no direct authority or management over that, other than what we do with the building department, we, with any other building. But, uh, the, the difference in, in this type of program versus the Section Eight program is huge. Yeah, I think that, uh, it's just something that I, I think folks need to understand the big difference there. So, thank you for giving me that time, Mayor. Uh, I appreciate that. That's all for me, thanks.
I appreciate you bringing that up. That's a good idea, because I get stopped all the time, too. People want to know, "What did I sign up for?" I go to the city club, but we don't have anything to do with it.
I get on your phone.
We don't own it, yeah, that's how I'm getting it. We have nothing to do with it.
If I could, I would also, before we go on, I would like the, the minutes of the meeting to reflect that I said Chief Jones was young, spry, and attractive. Those were the words that I used when I discussed them earlier. I'd like that recorded in the minutes of the meeting.
I don't know if he's down here, Chief.
I'm worried, I'm worried, Chief. Hey, if I want to say it, might as well be on the record.
Both, please, please.
Yes, sir, um, I thank you, Councilman Wright, for, for providing that information. I've got any questions also. Uh, and if, if you, if you know anything about what Section Eight is, if you listen to that explanation, you know that there are two different, two different programs total, all together. And also, I do want to say I appreciate the discussion with everyone today on that OPEB trust retirement benefit. I thought that was really good discussion. And with that, everybody have a good rest of the week.
Thank you, both.
Okay, um, so I'm going to do two plugs today. One will be for the, uh, for the farmer's market this weekend at the park. And so, I do encourage everyone to come out, they're a lot of fun. There's starting to be more and more vendors coming out, so that should encourage more and more citizens to come out and our neighbors, not just Centerville citizens, but Warner Robins, Perry, Byron, Atlanta, anybody who wants to come down, they're welcome to come down. Um, I'll tell you another good thing, Boy Scout True for Hundreds is growing, and so that's a good sign, and, but it can always grow some more. So, anybody has any children that's within Boy Scout age, certainly feel free to contact me or the scout master, and they can be able to assist you on getting enrolled. They meet Monday nights at seven PM at the old fire station across the street from Centerville Elementary.
And when do they meet?
Seven PM.
Which day?
On Monday night.
Okay.
What I say, uh, we need help at the recycle center, so if anybody has a minute, would like to learn how to do it, or be willing to offer some time. It's normally three-hour shifts, two, three-hour shifts on any one of the three days, but it's not really that hard, and it's very rewarding if you come out and, you know, just back up on it for us, so, I'll tell you.
All right, yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate all that. Um, a couple things real quick is, last Thursday night, we had a Northside High School rally, Parkville, yes. It was absolutely fabulous. I mean, kids and all the adults were there, they all did a great job themselves, they behaved. It was something to really be proud of, what they did, we're very proud of Northside High School for it. I'm also proud of our people. We have a lot of employees out there working, keeping the trash up, helping to direct some things. Police were doing a great job over there to make sure the traffic was flowing well. Fire department was assisting the two, had one truck right in the middle of the road, but it was, they did a good job. They all, I appreciate what our city does. I get compliments on Tess being out there, and her being involved in it. Now, I appreciate everybody who was out there with us. I was out there myself for about an hour, I guess, and really enjoyed it. Thank you all very much, and I don't have anything else. So, with that, council is now over. Thank you very much, everybody.